Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is July 20th. This is our regular scheduled meeting. And actually, we didn't do too bad. I thought we were going to start a little later, but it's only 7:03. So again, this is a virtual and in-person board meeting. We have trustee Mosib and trustee Thorpe here with us today in person, and the other four colleagues are joining us virtually. Madam Secretary, if we can have a roll call vote, please? Let me call this meeting to order first. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Roll.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Mary Lane is present. Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Present.
Adel Mosib. Mary Petchlikoff.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
President Berry.
Here. Thank you. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Shannon Peterson, Executive Director of Student Achievement, will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Moment of Silence.
Good evening, everyone. So just as we've done every month since the current crisis, I just want to have a moment of silence for anyone who's lost a loved one as a result of COVID-19. I think it's appropriate that we continue to recognize those who are suffering in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Agenda Items: Retirements.
So we do have a few retirements that I want to announce today. I want to both congratulate our employees and thank them for their years of service. We have Scott Apple with over 20 years of service, Deborah Bradley with over 20 years of service, Jamie Burgess with over 20 years of service, and Connie Harris with 22 years of service. Congratulations to our retirees. And again, thank you for all those years of service. We appreciate your hard work and dedication to the students in our district. I'll go to the next one on there as well, which is Appointments. We do have a couple of appointments on the agenda. One is the Miller Principle, and then we have the HR Director. I want to mention this because the Central Office is also, and I know the Board is aware of this, but we, part of the share of the sacrifice for the reductions that we have to face because of the COVID situation with the budget, I know we've gone over it. We have reduced approximately $1.4 million out of the general fund from Central Office-type employees, which includes Cabinet and/or other DFSC employees and others. And we've done it in a way, and what we're trying to do for the most part is to save jobs. And so everyone has kind of sacrificed a little, so I just wanted to mention that. And I want to mention, too, we had a nice transition model. And we thought that, given the COVID situation, we really did try to get the Miller position appointed now so that that person could start preparing. And secondly, thanks to Mr. Cedarlin, who allowed us a transition plan. He's the Director. He's been with us since 2011. He announced that he'll be retiring next year in June. So what that allowed us to do is transition. And so we actually didn't fill different positions in HR. And we're going to have an $80,000 savings, but our appointment is actually going to start October 1. And the reason we did that is because we want to also help with the school where the individual is leaving. And so it'll help that building with transition. Secondly, there's a budget savings because we did not fill another administrative position. And so that's where the money savings. So it's over $80,000 first year, and then over $60,000 in subsequent years, as long as we keep the reductions. And I could tell you, even in the Superintendent Department, we've taken reductions. You know, we know that Ms. Candia is going to be leaving, and we congratulate her on her retirement. But that allowed us to not fill that position, and others are picking up duty. So we're doing that all over the district. I wanted to point out that we're starting directly with our department and Central Office because we know it's a tough situation.
Dr. Malenko.
Yes.
May I rephrase what I just heard?
Sure.
You are not filling some positions, and the Cabinet is taking pay reductions, correct?
Yeah, there's been reductions of positions at the Cabinet level and reductions in pay, yes.
Okay. I just want to make it clear to people.
Yes, and there's been other groups that have also agreed for reductions, too.
Thank you.
Thank you to them.
So I believe that's it for Agenda Items. Madam Secretary, next item, please.
Not Agenda Items: COVID-19 Update.
And I think I should point out, too, that you see that we're wearing our masks in here. We're following social distance, but we are legally allowed to take them off when we're speaking. That went through attorney, and so we're being very safe. So I just want to let people know that when we're finished speaking into the microphone, we put them back on. I'm going to group this. Thank you, Secretary Lane. I'm going to group these all together like I've done in the past. President Berry. So the first thing is obviously the COVID-19 update. You know, there's a lot of things going on. We constantly are monitoring the situation. And we see the numbers. And just a reminder to everyone to do your part. We're doing our part by having the social distance meeting today with masks and following all proper protocols. Any of our buildings where we enter, we have a protocol from the Wayne County Health Department, and we follow those. We have committees that are working to make sure that we maintain the health and safety of the community. So I want to mention that with the COVID-19. And then I'm going to go, I'm going to group it with the reopening. So the Governor, on June 30th, put out the framework for reopening schools. And this would have been after our last board meeting. And so our Dearborn Reopening Committee has been working hard. Trustee Thorpe is on that, and trustee Lane. And they're going to be wrapping up their work this week, I believe. This is the last meeting. Recommendations will then be coming to me and then the Board subsequently. And so we are planning for a release of the plan. Again, we had to wait for the Governor's framework. But understand, a lot of people are asking, well, what's the plan? What's the plan? What's the plan? Here's the thing. You have to have multiple plans per the Governor's order because if the situation changes, you have to be prepared. For example, if you're in Stage 3, that means we're all online, and we have no choice in the matter. If we're in Stage 4 or Stage 5 under the Governor's plan, then we do have the ability for some in-person instruction. But the committee is working, and we are looking at things without giving all the detail because we know we have a lot of people on that committee. You know, we're looking at things like hybrid models of part-time and other things blended in with online because we know we're the third-largest district, and to social distance is going to be very difficult. So I know that the committee has been working very hard. I've popped into some. I'm not serving on the committee purposely because the recommendations will come to me. The Chairs are Mesa Moly Bazey, Jane Mazza, Dave Higgins. And from the times I've gone in there, I can tell you the committee is really working hard, and there's so many subcommittees. It's been difficult in the virtual situation. But I do want to thank everybody that's on that committee. And I want to thank the trustees who are serving. And I believe trustee Lane may want to add some comments.
Trustee Lane, please.
Yeah, Dr. Malenko, President Berry, and colleagues. I do want to say something to the people in the community about the committee. It's almost 100 people. People have come from every single group that is represented in the district, including students, including parents, all different types of staff members, myself and trustee Thorpe also. We have read, I personally can tell you that I've read at least 20, 30 different reopening plans. I've read different state plans. I read the CDC guidelines. I have piles of them printed off. And we considered this down to like the first step that a student takes in their journey to get to school. You know, when they get to the bus stop, do they need to have a temperature check? What are the ramifications? Every step that that student or staff person takes has a whole bunch of different rollouts. You know, do they get temperature checks at school? Do they get temperature checks at the bus stop? If they get it at the bus stop, are we going to have to hire extra people? The complications from COVID-19 are so massive and overwhelming. It's really been very difficult. We had probably 20 different subcommittees that looked at all different things. And we wanted to make sure that we covered all different categories. We want, first and foremost, to have everybody be safe. And we wanted to comply, of course, with existing law, with CDC guidelines. And that's been very frustrating because it's changed, honestly, it's changed every single day. So we don't know what we're expecting, but we have developed different plans. And we have done it down to the details of, do we need to open windows? Do students need to wear sweatshirts to school? This is the kind of detail that we're talking about. Do we need to have one medical room? Do we need to have two? The nurses did a phenomenal job on their plan. It's so specific with the questions. So I don't think anyone can fault us in the considerations that we've taken under advisement. But because the situation has changed so much, and we don't see this ending soon, we do want to, I personally want to recommend that at least some kind of Skeleco Committee continues through the next year because we're going to go off and on. We anticipate that we're going to start maybe online. Our goal is to get as many people, students and staff, in person as is safe. We need 14 days of declining numbers, which we don't have. The United States is exploding, and even the state of Michigan is increasing rather than declining. So everyone that wants school to reopen, student, parents, staff, you need to be wearing masks. You need to be staying home, and you need to follow the guidelines for Washingtonians. They're simple things, but those are essential if we're ever going to open. It's our hope to get back to normal, but when that will happen, we don't exactly know. We will roll out a plan pretty soon, and it will be in compliance. But it's been an unprecedented time, and it's been unprecedented planning. We need unprecedented support from the community. We need your cooperation. We need your understanding that we've tried very hard with them. And I'm very proud of the work product and really proud of what everyone has considered and thought about. And I would really like to thank everybody. It's our goal also to allow people to not be forced to do things, but to, for example, for teachers, to be able to do what is best for them. So if they're in an at-risk group, maybe they teach remotely. All those things have been taken into consideration. And we do want to reassure parents and staff that no one could have thought about it more. I mean, I fall asleep thinking about it. So that's my summary of it.
Thank you, trustee Lane. That was very well said.
Thank you. Thank you, yes, appreciate it. And again, appreciate the great work of the committee. Dearborn, we do things, and we're very deliberate, and we didn't rush. We have a very community-based committee with employees. And thank you so much, trustee Lane, for giving that analysis and for everybody on the committee. Okay, I want to talk about the protective equipment, PPE equipment. The county is helping us out. We are getting support from the county. And so they are doing a bid. And so we're trying with the other superintendents in Wayne County to kind of coordinate efforts under Dr. Lepa, which is a positive thing. Also, we have Mark Andrews, Nurse Carrie Kahn, Abe Mashur, Gary Shelby, and John Leacher and a few others that constantly get updates on material. So we do, we are going to be looking at a large mask purchase that we're going to need because, under the Governor's order, there is some requirements of that. And so we're trying to get on top of things. And again, we don't have a lot of time, so we're going to be working. But our team continues to work, and I want to thank the county. We also have support from the County Health Department as well. And we have, Dr. Carol Osterbury serves on our committee, so it's a real positive. My next thing, I'm going to ask Dr. Chokol. I believe she's available to pop in to talk about the Summer Adventure program. And I know that's going pretty well, if we could get her in.
Okay, here I am. Is my microphone working?
Yes.
Great. Well, good evening, President Berry and trustees. Superintendent Malenko. I'm here to talk about Summer Adventure, which is the summer camp that Dearborn has traditionally provided for families for many, many years. The summer camp was a request this year from many of our parents whose children have attended in the past. So with the leadership of Supervisor Stephanie Stover and Early Childhood Coordinator Amy Modica, these leaders, along with their teachers, developed a proposal and a plan for a small summer camp to meet the needs of families while still observing the new protocols and procedures that have come about as the result of the COVID-19 virus. In addition to the training that staff normally gets through the summer, the staff also went through hygiene, social distancing. They completed training on entry/exit procedures along with health questions that parents answer daily, as well as cleaning protocols. The engineer and custodians at Snow Elementary went through COVID-19 disinfecting procedure training. And the staff provides cleaning of what is called touch points, desks, tables, doorknobs, surfaces that children and adults might touch on a routine basis. These are cleaned routinely throughout the day. So we're happy to report that we have 10 children attending the program. Normally, there are about 80 to 90 children who attend throughout the summer. And the children are having a truly wonderful experience as well as all staying healthy at the site thus far. So thank you. I'd like to thank the Board of Education, as well as the four teachers for Summer Adventure, for giving permission for us to operate this program. The teachers are Manager Pat Zander, Christina Greco, Sharon Sadowski, and Alicia Sims. So without them, we would not be able to provide this service for our families. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chokol. Trustee Thorpe, you have a question?
You mentioned that there's 10 children involved with it. How many families do they represent?
I don't know the answer to that. We have four preschool and six school-aged children. I don't know how many different families, though. I can get that information.
Trustee McDonald?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, when I was reading about the program, it sounded really interesting, and I liked the concept of learning through the decades. And they're going to take one decade each week and kind of center the learning around that. So I thought that was a really interesting concept. So kudos to the teachers and Stephanie for putting together that program.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else?
And it'll also give us a chance to kind of, on a small scale, see where things are going very well and where things could need some improvement.
Trustee Mosib?
Yeah, although this was a small setting class, but would these teachers or the administrator give any recommendations to the current committee that we have as far as how this process went with these students? So if we were to go in the fall with in-person learning, this would be a good, I don't want to use the word test, but essentially it is so we can learn for the rest of the schools.
So the training program that was provided was developed in conjunction with our district, one of our district nurses, Carrie Kahn, as well as our supervisor for our engineers and custodians, Gary Shelby, along with consultation with our Director of Operations, Mark Andrews. So all of them have been part of these ongoing conversations on the Crisis Committee. Many of the same individuals are also part of the Reopening Schools Committee so that the guidance and the recommendations that are coming out, including the Governor's Roadmap, were all taken into account relative to rolling this out. And again, having a small number of children to try it on certainly provided a very safe venue for both the children as well as the staff. So I think it was, trustee Mosib, you're right, a very, a good test of possible times to come.
Very good point. Thank you very much, Dr. Chokol. Dr. Malenko, you want to continue?
Yeah, I just have one other thing.
President Berry?
Yes, trustee Lane, I'm sorry.
I want to comment on trustee Mosib's point. He's accurate in that it's a good test. But I'd like to state the obvious for all of us. There were 10 kids in there. Normally, there would be 80 or 90. So we're not going, it's not going to be easy to do what we used to do. What we used to do was provide massive services for the community, social, psychological, food, medical. We can't do that. And the other thing that we're not thinking of is the 10 children that were in that program were probably not our most vulnerable students and staff. Those are the people we're going to have to focus on when we reopen in person. And for me, they're a huge priority because we have students who are economically deprived. We have students who might be refugees. We have staff who are in risk groups. We have medically fragile children. It's one thing to start a small group of 10, but remember, when we're talking about a district of 21,000, it's going to be an unbelievable challenge. So we need to go slow. That's my, "Start slow" is my best advice to all of us.
Thank you, trustee Lane.
Thank you.
Trustee Berry, I had one quick question.
Please. Just for the record, I'm not seeing you on the screen, so just chime in when you need to.
Oh, you're not, okay.
Go ahead, trustee.
My question was, of the 10 folks that did sign up for the program, was there a large demand for more? Or were there 10 only that were interested in the summer program?
We initially had the demand for more than 10, but because we took our time and developed a program and a training protocol that we all discussed, reflected on, and were comfortable with, unfortunately, many of the families had found another venue for care and activities for their children for the summer. So we did not formally start until, I want to say, the 23rd, the 23rd or the 25th of June. The 10 students reflect trustee Thorpe, six families. So I did text Supervisor Stover, and she did say there were six families represented. So we had space for about 20 students, but decided to run it for the 10 anyway.
Okay, great, thank you.
President Berry?
Yes, trustee Lane?
I know that trustee McDonald serves on the College Committee. I read parts of their information. I was really impressed with their flyer that was sent out. They have a program that's going to be called Live Without the Drive, in case all of us haven't seen it. But it's going to be a different format. So students at the college will have a lot of different choices. I'd like trustee McDonald to comment on anything that's relevant. But I think also it would be a great example for our reopen committee to try to consider all those different options, one online, one live online, one in person, things like that.
Trustee McDonald?
I'll make a quick comment about the college program. Again, like Mary, like you said, trustee Lane, the committee is doing amazing work. They are looking at every possibility. They are leaving no stone unturned, considering everything that can possibly happen. And they've come up with a lot of really good recommendations. It's still in the process. We're working things out. I was going to give a, I know we're going to have a report on it at the next college meeting. But generally speaking, that is one of the things that they came up with, is deliverables. How are we going to give options for the way that we deliver education for our college students? Because it's important, and people are going to have different needs and different ideas of what they're comfortable with, knowing the situation that they're involved in. And number one, and this includes the college in P-12, nimble is the word. We're going to have to be nimble. No matter what we do, we have to have a contingency plan and another contingency plan, and just be ready, considering what is going on in the community, the Governor's orders. You know, you have to take everything in consideration. And I know it's not what folks in the community want to hear, but we have to just be ready to change at a moment's notice because this is unusual circumstances, and we don't know what tomorrow's going to bring.
Thank you, trustee McDonald.
President Berry, if I may, since I, we now know that you can't see us. We were raising our hands. I would also like to add, because I totally agree with what both trustee Lane and McDonald have stated, is we have to not feel secure or safe by this test population because six families is not what we're going to be experiencing come the fall school year by any margin. And to assume that we're getting a good feel of how this is going to work in a large population is just not being honest with the community members. I already have firsthand experience of just the daycare setting that is having an issue now. And they've been open for about six weeks with a much larger population of young children. My concern is that people are going to get a false sense of relaxation. And that's what's happening to drive up the numbers once again in the community, is that people have kind of let down their guard. And I want everyone to understand that we, human nature is one of going back to old habits. And even in the school community, we're going to see similar issues with people who become relaxed and comfortable again. And I just want to make sure that we don't give a false sense of security to the community, that we've got this all under control because, quite frankly, none of us have this under control. And we need to be prepared for, just as trustee McDonald said, to switch gears at a moment's notice. And we don't do this to frustrate or confuse or even send the message that we don't know what we're doing. The fact is, is everyone is in a new environment now, and we're all going to have to be prepared to not always be happy with how we're going to have to manage our day-to-day as we have in the past.
All I can say is I'm so proud of this administration with the leadership of Dr. Malenko, my colleagues, all of our staff, especially our teachers, the job they've done the last four months. I know with the committee, I've been talking to some of the committee members and some of my, a couple of my colleagues. Yes, we are listening to parents. Yes, we are very concerned about our students. And we are very, very concerned about our employees, especially our frontline, our teachers. So just understand, know that we are, this is not an easy task for us. These aren't easy decisions. But we will do what's in the best possible, you know, situation for everybody. Parents, I've been hearing from some parents telling me that, "If you open up the classrooms, I'm taking my child and going to an online charter school." All I can say is you trust us with your children. Continue to do so. You will, we will listen to you, and we will do what's right for you and your children. Trust us. I know it's very hard to ask you to trust us during these trying times, but you've trusted us all along. We've always delivered. Continue to trust us. Thank you. Dr. Malenko, you want to continue?
Yeah, I'll make a couple more. I appreciate that. And I want to thank your leadership and the leadership of the Board and your support. and your support through this crisis. It's been tremendous. Thank you. I'll just kind of outline the timeline since we were kind of getting into that. Basically, as the committee I mentioned is going to wrap up this week, there'll be a memo coming to the board just with a general update. The team is then working on the written report. The board should get the written report by the 30th of the month, the detail. And from what I hear, ours is extremely detailed, just as our continuity of learning plan was when we did that back in April, because we don't settle for the minimum. We go above and beyond in our district, and that's my understanding what's happening. So then, we would then make a public draft release tentatively on August 4th of the plan. Again, it'll be multiple. It wouldn't yet be approved, but it would be in draft form. We would then, I talked to President Berry and President Cavallona from the college. We would then hopefully like to take it for approval with the board on August 10th, the college board meeting, and it does by law have to be approved by the 17th. So we're, again, we have a great process, a lot of people involved, and I'm glad that we do have the stakeholders. We will also have, and I've put this out, we do have an online option as well. And so I appreciate the comments of the president, because we are looking, you know, it's going to be a tough year, as everyone said. This is going to be our toughest year, I believe, and I can say that I'm going into 25 years in Dearborn schools this October, and it's going to probably be the toughest year, but we're ready for it. We're up for the challenge, and we are going to protect the interests of the students in the community.
Trustee Thorpe?
Trustee Berry?
Hold on one second. Trustee Thorpe?
You mentioned that we'll have this in front of us on August 10th. When is our stated start date for the district this year?
I believe...
I think it's the 27th?
Yeah, it's still the same date, yeah. It's the end of...
27?
27, the 31st.
Oh, 31st.
All right, 31st.
Staff starts on the 27th, and teacher, kids on the 31st.
Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Lane? I mean, Trustee Petchikoff?
Petchikoff, yeah, just a quick question. Did we want to, because we're going to be voting on this, and we haven't all been involved on the committees themselves, do we want to consider having a quick study session of the full board when we receive this? Or are we all just going to be asking questions independently, individually, and/or making suggestions independently that the other board members might not be aware of, because we won't be together as a full board?
I would imagine, Trustee Petchikoff, I would imagine, once we get the report on the 4th, I'll go ahead and instruct Dr. Malako to set up some small group sessions to answer any concerns or questions.
Yeah, something.
That will give us a time. Actually, we can go ahead and schedule those now, you know, sooner than later.
Sure.
Knowing that we're going to have this information on the 4th, so you can be ready. Would that, is that acceptable to you?
Thank you.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, I spoke to President Cavallona, and that is the plan that we're moving forward with, too. After the plan is put out and the board will get a look at it, we will have small group meetings to discuss it further.
Yes, thank you.
And to put everybody on the same page and get their questions answered.
Yes, thank you. That sounds like a good plan. Trustee Mosip?
Okay, so, two things. One is patiently waiting for the recommendations from the committee, but I, I know there are parents who are serving on this committee, but we would like to get as much parents' feedback as possible. So are we planning on surveying parents in some way or form to see where they feel if we're offering both options, the online option and/or the in-person?
Yeah, they did, oh, sorry.
He did that.
Sorry. My, my other question is regarding online, if we go virtually 100% online, and the first three months since March, it was very difficult for a lot of students to be attentive online, especially for special ed students. So are we also offering a plan for offline education as far as getting students' materials in their hands, things that they can learn without the screen? It's very important, because unfortunately, we're, we're in a very tough situation. I, I understand that, and the teachers are doing an amazing job accommodating that. But unfortunately, the screen is not as even close to be a good substitute for, for in-person. So are we going to be offering or requiring, that we're going to offer for any parents who ask for offline education, that we're going to offer those materials?
Yeah, absolutely. And we did that with the continuity plan, and obviously, we're now better with our delivery systems. We have transportation that can do things, and we have methods for doing that, absolutely. And that wasn't our, our plan back in April as well, but it would definitely be part of that plan for special ed. And I do agree, I mean, we have to start from the premise that we know that online, even, and I'm a supporter of online, but we also know that in-person instruction is a higher quality. Let's just be honest about that. Secondly, though, we are continuing to improve our online capability. And why are we doing it? Because we have to, because of the COVID. If, you know, we still did online, and we're glad that we were ahead, but now it's really kind of forced not only us, but all districts. Thankfully, as you guys are all aware, the board in the community, we gave, gave out those Chromebooks right away, and we distributed them, and so we have plans for, you know, Chromebook purchases that the board's approved, and we definitely need to make sure that we're doing all we can to enhance that. But I do agree with you, Trustee Mosip, that, you know, you can't replace that. And so those are concerns I have as well, especially when I think of the at-risk students in the special education, English language newcomers, those are, are heavy weight on my, on my mind when we're implementing this. So it will be difficult, but we will, we have a great staff in the committee, and we have a plan that we'll do to implement for the benefit of those students. And Mr. Salee is constantly in contact with the county over the special ed program. So, so I could also mention, oh, we did do a survey, by the way. The committee did a survey early on, so that survey is, was completed by the committee as well. The last thing I just want to mention, my last thing on my report, is you probably heard, and I know the board is aware, this morning I was actually interviewed by NBC, and it was relative to, it was, I was on the national, I think it was 11:30, might be on a couple more, but they asked about the lawsuit that the Attorney General initiated from Michigan and other states, and the State Department of Education, because this is a new formula coming from the U.S. Department of Education, and they're asking us to change the formula on how we provide money to the private schools. We always have those at-risk students, but this new formula coming from the U.S. Department of Education, there seems to be a consensus that it's not following the CARES Act. And so if we were hap, we were to have to allocate all this money, it would cost us $1 million based on this new formula. And so that's where the lawsuit is, and so I, you know, that's just the fact. The fact of the matter is, is that the reason Michigan and other states initiated is because they don't believe it's to the letter of the law, and it's not protecting at-risk students, because normally, it's funded on a Title I formula based on at-risk. And the U.S. Department of Education said, no, equitable funding across for everyone, regardless of the title status. And so they did ask me to comment, especially with our district being one of the third largest, and I kept it very positive. They only, I think, showed a brief clip, but I do support what the action the state has taken, because ultimately, our students will suffer if the money is taken from our district. So I just wanted to give an update to everyone on that. So thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Madam Secretary, next item, please.
The next item is recognition and acknowledgements. There are none, but that's only because we're going to have graduation, I believe, later. We had four awesome graduations, so I think we'll see that in a minute. But next after that is approval of minutes for the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Regular P12 meeting, June 22nd, 2020, Board Report 20-01. Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion moved by Trustee Thorpe, supported by Trustee Mosip. Are there any corrections or comments? Hearing none, we can go ahead with a roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Lane, yes. Mead?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Mosip?
Yes.
Petchikoff?
Yes.
Thorpe?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes, thank you. Please attach a unanimous roll call vote in affirmative.